Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of seven o'clock on Thursday, May 6, 2021. Thank you all for joining the Lexington City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And as is usual, our first item of business, if you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
By the United States.
And to the republic. One nation under God. Indivisible. Justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Always feel good and patriotic, one, standing up and getting the blood pumping, and two, thinking about the folks that protect us and keep us safe. Next item is consideration of the agenda. Wanted to add two pieces or two components. One, under reports for boards and commissions, Ms. Strong is going to give a brief update on Rana. And also wanted to, of course, add the request from Washington Lee for a street closure later this month for move out under the consent agenda. Is there anything else to be considered with the agenda? Hearing none, unless there's an objection, we will adopt the agenda with those additions. Hearing no objections that the agenda is adopted. Next item are proclamations, which are always good fun, not to hear my voice, but the words and the praise that we get to heap on those in our community. First proclamation is expressing the appreciation of the mayor's city council of local law enforcement officers. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agencies serving the city of Lexington, County of Rockbridge, the town of Glasgow, and the city of Buena Vista provide a vital public service by safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in the Rockbridge area. And whereas safety of our citizens is a primary goal of local, state, and national government, and whereas law enforcement is one of the few chosen professions that require the willingness to at any moment put themselves in harm's way to protect others. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officials, enforcement officials in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice dying in the line of duty. And whereas the Lexington Police Department, the Rockbridge County Sheriff's Department, the Buena Vista Police Department, Buena Vista Sheriff's Department, Glasgow Police Department, Rockbridge Regional Jail, and Virginia Military Institute Police are comprised of the finest officers, supervisors, administrative and support staff that can be found within the profession. Now, therefore, we, as the mayor and Lexington City Council, call upon all citizens of Lexington, Virginia to observe the week of May 9 through May 15, 2021, as Police Week, during which all of our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And we urge all citizens to take the time to thank those in law enforcement for the important service they provide to all of us. We further call upon all citizens of the city of Lexington to observe May 9 through May 15, 2021, as Police Officers Week in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes, adopted the sixth day of May 2021. And I know I speak on behalf of all of our council in our proud city, thanking our police department, welcoming Chief Green on Monday, and thanking the agencies also listed in this proclamation. I also want to offer resolution recognizing May as Business Appreciation Month. Whereas on May 1, 2019, Governor Northam declared the month of May as Business Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the business community within the city of Lexington is vital to the character of our community and to the city's economic prosperity and growth. And whereas businesses within the city of Lexington provide jobs, products, and services to our residents, visitors, and residents and surrounding communities. And whereas the city of Lexington businesses felt the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, many were able to adapt, survive, and even thrive through these tumultuous times. And whereas the city of Lexington's top employment industries, including education, visitor services, community services, specialized retail, lodging, construction, and food service, all of which were significantly impacted by the pandemic. And whereas the city of Lexington is currently home to 569 thriving businesses, all of which contribute to the unique fabric of our community. And whereas many businesses in the city of Lexington are local, homegrown, and small businesses operated by dedicated entrepreneurs. And whereas the city of Lexington extends its gratitude and appreciation for the dedication and perseverance of all our local businesses, owners, managers, and staff. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lexington City Council, by this resolution, does hereby recognize May 2021 as Business Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and here in the city of Lexington. Further, the Lexington City Council calls this observance to the attention of all our citizens, and asks that you thank your local business owners and support their good work and contributions to our community, adopted May 6, 2021. And I thank council for their support of this resolution, and encourage everyone to shop local, go visit our local stores, and keep uplifting our community in economic prosperity. The next item on the agenda is in regard to presentations, and Eric Wilson has been kind enough to provide us a minute in history, and is here with us this evening. Eric, if you want to take it away.
Thanks. I need, I think, need to be enabled to screen share. Janie can do that.
I think I've just gotten a note that there's a technical problem that is not allowing, may not be able to share the screen.
So. This one's pretty image heavy. So. How to do this? Maybe, maybe we could kick it to the next meeting. That makes sense.
Try now, Eric, and see if it'll let you.
Okay. Oh, here we go.
Right.
Are you all seeing our point?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Janie.
Think we're there. All right. We'll start. Okay, here we are. Thank you for your patience and time and leadership. Sometimes when I've done these, they're prompted by sort of a commemorative cue and anniversary. Often, our work with the Historical Society, or history in general, tries to bring some new information, some lesser known stories to light. This is more in the spirit of associational thinking about history and nature and the arts and our civic culture, rather than providing many more new names and dates. I hope it ends by affirming a lot of the work that you all have done, particularly with comprehensive plan, and also picks up on some of the spring wonders around here, and tries to emphasize a couple things, that when we weave or constillate history with nature and the arts, many good things happen, business-wise, intellectually, culturally. But it also emphasizes variety, that histories are never singular, they might be distinctive, but they're always collective and in context. So I'm going to start with a picture from Earth Day, and we're going to spin the compass here, and just hit four kind of corners of the county, looking from the center here, top of Diamond Hill, really the center of where we are. And struck me, coming to work that day, how often I look to the west in Lexington from the top of town, and to reorient ourselves, and just simply looking in different directions can be of value. So there's our eastern shot. Go to the southern part of the county, as you know, recently, Natural Bridge State Park, which has really sunk into its historic resources, has been recognized as International Dark Sky Site. We're fortunate in our associations, as is the city at large, to have that. And again, that bridging of nature, history, tourism, I think will be great to move forward with. Looking to the north, there's a historic cabin on near South River. And if you look closely, that's the Milky Way behind it. So here's a way of taking this. I did not take this picture. Let's be quite clear. I took the first one, that's about it. But the ways in which, you know, the visual arts, photography, painting have been part of a Rockbridge cultural legacy, you know, really since European settlement, 18th century, in different ways before, I think this captures that, and certainly speaks to that, that kind of metaphor. But I think metaphors help us reach new places and reach new understandings. Just totally struck and grateful that we were in the process of consulting about how to preserve a building like this, when I was sent this and learned about it. More recently, you all have seen this, and I did not take this picture either. The remarkable thing is to see all those stars with our familiar Western landscape, right, that other Western boundary, but to see it in completely new lights, and what that brings. There's beauty here, there's majesty, mystery, there's terror. And again, I think history and the arts can make a lot of this. I couldn't help but think of the neighboring mountain there, a nicely paired painting, Caridora, many of you know from Rockbridge Bass, recently recognized with the new state historic marker. This is owned by the Virginia Museum of History and Culture, and will likely be part of an exhibit that we, the Historical Society, and different 10 organizations around the state are helping to shape, will be representatives for the valley, and ambassadors for what Lexington and Rockbridge and our neighboring counties have to offer. And, you know, this is just a mock-up of what will come, but for our flagship state history museum to really be fronting our place in the valley, that's a big part of why we were chosen, and as part of where you all have seen the Natural Bridge exhibit came out of, those neighboring state institutions are really foregrounding what this area has to offer. But locally, in the arts, some of you were probably here at one of Lexington's green spaces, local young dancers using both the green space and the historic surrounding for a very distinctive kind of cultural opportunity and sharing. Few years earlier, that same space in a much more classical kind of vein for a county and a city that brings together that kind of classical tradition in our townscapes and homescapes and campuses, again, bringing performing arts, theater, dance, to a wide swath of the community, and making sure that, you know, performing under the stars or the day star of the sun is part of what we can do. Couple weeks ago, up on top of Southern Virginia University, overlooking Blue Ridge, again, we've got history, classical history. How do the tyranny, the politics of violence speak to us today, and then educational opportunity for local performers and students. And there at Lime Kiln, one of our city's great treasures, performing under the stars for many years, just taking here two moments. I think, you know, we've come to think the 1860s seem to be our moment in history, and it's one of many. But just to look at the different ways in which Stonewall Country from the 1980s to early 2000s, or an 1890 German play that was redone recently, can give different angles on that. We're rich in those resources, and they're constantly asking us to bridge together. So to, I just would echo that the work you all have done and contributed. I don't think they're the first three in there, but maybe like three of the first four things, sections in that plan are nature, history, and the arts. And I will also say, this is like my second favorite map of Lexington now, the cultural assets here. I just think it's a brilliant image of the hotspots that we have to offer nestled within the greensapes and the historic scapes. So, you know, let's continue bridging these together, thanks to tourism, thanks to all the other educational civic organizations that are doing that. We're certainly eager for our part to help that along.
Excellent. Thank you, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Went through that quickly, but beautiful visuals. And there is a great deal of beauty that surrounds us every day, and always pleased when each and every one of us steals the time to step away from the madness and embrace the good things that are surrounding us in peace and solitude. So, thank you for your continued support with a minute in history.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of minutes, and you had a few that were delivered to you. With our new format, it certainly is less to consume, and just to share with the public and to be transparent, we've modified our process for our minute preparation, because we're recording these and have the opportunity to go back and actually watch it all over again. We've made our clerks' life a little bit easier with doing what I would term topical minutes. And unless council has any objections, we will approve the minutes as presented. Very good. Next item, citizens' remarks and comments. We welcome folks to join us, sadly, virtually for a bit longer, until perhaps the state of emergency is lifted, or we're all vaccinated, or some other opportunity that allows us to meet in person. But we always welcome either virtually or in person comments from folks in our But we always welcome either virtually or in-person comments from folks in our community. And like to begin, as is always the case, we welcome individuals and their comments as that you sign up prior to the meeting and that you be recognized during this section of the council's agenda. And when speaking, remind everyone to please stand and state your name and address for the clerk to record for the record, to make your comments to the council as a whole. To be brief, state your position and provide facts, provide written statements and/or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for you to share what's on your mind, we ask you to speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. And we tend to request that folks hold their comments to three minutes for, out of respect for everyone's time involved. And at this time, I'd like to call on Kim Dory. If you would.
Hello.
Hello, Kim, welcome, take it away.
Well, as before, I have a slideshow for you all, I know it was emailed previously, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. I am pushing for the Lexington Skate Park to be in our budget. As you'll see, I have noted what beautiful properties Lexington already has. We have so many opportunities in the city, we have an overabundance of playgrounds that are mostly stated for younger age groups, not for teens or even, you know, more adults who wish to do activity there. You can go ahead, Janie. One more. So we have just about everything, Lexington has just about covered everything when it comes to parks and recreation, except for the skate park. Go ahead, Janie. I'm going to show you a current picture, this is listed, as we said previously, as the worst skate park in Virginia, there's a link there if you'd like to look it up. Next is my, and I have been really surprised at the amount of support in our community looking or just concerned while we don't have a skate park. This is their plan with a budget. It would be 15 pieces of equipment, or 14 with two of our own resalvaged, go ahead. It is a low maintenance steel structure, so this is a 20-year investment, it's been done three times already, and it's just been thrown away because they're not really built to last, go ahead. So you can just scroll through these at will, Janie, these are our cities that are close to us, what they've been willing to invest, some cities are bigger than us, some are smaller. I didn't get a picture of Clifton Forge, but that has a very nice skate park. And in conclusion, I know there are other projects in the park and recreation needs, but when you're listed as the worst skate park in Virginia, to me, this is a dire need. So I'm asking, just here again, to ask for funds, and if you all have any questions for me, I have my email on the beginning slide, as far as the pieces or the company, or, you know, this comes with installation, they install onsite. It's a very good company, reliable company, so. We need to get these kids outside, away from the computer, and I think you'll realize tonight with the letters, hopefully you'll realize there's a lot of concern and interest. So, thank you very much for hearing, and I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Kim, thank you for being with us, and thank you especially for providing the information ahead of time, I know I had an opportunity to go through your presentation and to see the details that you shared, and I.
Yes.
For anyone on council who hasn't, will give it time and serious consideration.
Please.
And members of council, any questions from that PowerPoint presentation? Hearing none, again, Kim, thank you for being with us, and as evidenced by comments that are to follow, you're quite a bit of energy and enthusiasm for the project that you've been working on, so thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Bye-bye.
Janie, are you aware of anyone else? I know this was prepared earlier, but was Kim the only one individual?
Kim's the only person I had signed up to speak.
Terrific. We will commence with the reading of the citizens' comments, and Ms. Alexander, if you'll get us started.
To Lexington City Council from Mark H. Reed, candidate for Delegate Virginia's 24th House District, subject, Rockbridge Regional Department of Social Services Site Selection Consulting Agreement. The Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors and the Lexington and Buena Vista City Councils, the governing bodies, all of whom appoint the members of the Rockbridge Area DSS Board of Directors, need to consider if the location of the proposed Rockbridge DSS site, as defined in the Rockbridge Regional Department of Social Services Site Selection Consulting Agreement, is in the best interests of the citizens of Rockbridge Area DSS serves. I would suggest that it is not. The proposed site is within a three-mile radius of the intersection of Route, US Route 60 and Interstate 81 for lease, build lease, or buy renovate, build-own scenarios. This proposed site is not even within three miles of any municipality in the Rockbridge area, except with the exception of Lexington, the current site of Rockbridge DSS. I am sure Rockbridge DSS can provide you with any number of statistics suggesting that any consideration of a new site should begin with a discussion of the financial and vulnerable citizen needs of Rockbridge Area citizens. Perhaps the discussion is ongoing, I would not know, since I have been unable to find any public record of RDSS meetings since February of 2020. For the purposes of providing you with the most basic summary of what, in my opinion, the governing body should be considering during your discussions, I submit that according to recent US Census data, 21.7% of Rockbridge County citizens live below the poverty level. The vast majority of Rockbridge County citizens live outside a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. 27.4% of Lexington City residents live below the poverty level. The vast majority of Lexington citizens live outside a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. 17.2% of Buena Vista City citizens live below the poverty level. No Buena Vista citizen lives within a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. 16.1% of Glasgow citizens live below the poverty level. No Glasgow citizen lives within a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. 12.4% of natural bridge citizens live below the poverty level. No natural bridge citizen lives within a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. 21.3% of Goshen citizens live below the poverty level. No Goshen citizens live within a three-mile radius of the intersection of US Route 60 and Interstate 81. None of the information is difficult to find, some of it may need to be verified, as I put it together on fairly short notice, and RDSS public records appear to be non-existent.
Ms. Alexander, I'm, the, three minutes has lapsed, and I will encourage people to consume the rest of that, as it'll be part of our minutes and certainly part of this meeting, and we'll call on Ms. Alligan.
I think you can hear me now.
Yes, sir.
All right, I just, I was having issues, now I'm not. This is from Joe Milo. You are doing the right thing by proceeding cautiously and thoughtfully concerning the sale of the Spotswood property. As you negotiate with the RAR and developers, I encourage you to consider roadway changes that may enhance the utility of the vacant land adjacent to the Piovano Building. A street from Emergency Circle going behind the Piovano Building, turning and exiting onto Spotswood should be considered, while the city has control of most of this route. Such a street would have a limited effect on the Piovano Building, and may prove a significant benefit to development of the western portion of the property. I also repeat my encouragement for you to sell the vacant parcel for a fair market value, Joe Milo.
This message is from Luca Surridge. Hello, I am emailing to say that our community would love a new skate park, it would be a great place for us, and it would be used greatly. Luca Surridge.
I have a message from Haley Mays. Finally having a skate park would be amazing, so tired of driving to Stanton or Charlottesville to skate, Haley Mays.
From Sean Jones, hello, I'm here emailing about the Lexington Skate Park, I have a few friends who live out there, and I've seen pictures of the local. I really feel like skateboarders of Lexington deserve a better skateboarding environment and park, I would love this to happen, if you could, that would be amazing, thank you, and have an amazing day. Sean Jones.
From John Brook, personally, I do not skate, however, I have noticed the impact it has on the community, tons of people every day are getting up and skating, this improves their health and helps people find new hobbies, skating is growing daily and people will flock to Lexington, John Brook.
And this is from John Hill, I'm very interested in the skate park proposal, John Hill.
This is from Stephen Wells, I am interested in a new skate park for the city of Lexington, Virginia. I would totally swing by and use it, no matter my skill level, I certainly would try it out. If you would build it in our own lovely town, it would be tremendously appreciated for all skaters, even monumental, to say the least. Stephen Wells.
Dear City Council, my name is Emmett Foreman, I am a fourth grader at Waddell Elementary School, I practice skateboarding two to three hours a day on my wooden back deck because our street does not pay very well, and is very bumpy, so I can't skateboard on it. Lots of kids in Lexington live on hills or busy streets where they also can't skateboard. When I first started skateboarding, we would go to the Lexington Skate Park, but we were disappointed that some of the ramps aren't there anymore. There are also areas of the skate park that aren't smoothly paid, where you can trip up and fly off your board, so now on the weekends, my parents drive me to Harrisonburg, Charlottesville, or Stanton to skate. But those are very far away, and we can't always travel, plus, other kids may not have that opportunity. I think skateboarding is great, because it's fun to work on new things, and I know that I have accomplished something. Skateboarding teaches people not to give up, it's great exercise and a fun way to make friends, I think more kids in Lexington would skateboard if we had an updated park. Please consider helping to make this skate park fun again, sincerely, Emmett.
I have a note from Wes Ryan, hi, I'm an upcoming sophomore at the high school and would like to say a few things regarding the skate park. First off, I really think a skate park would be great for the city of Lexington and the neighboring counties, the space is just perfect, perfect, right next to the pool, the sports center, and the school, kids can just walk straight to the skate park after class, or cool off in the pool after skateboarding, I think that would be great. I have seen a ridiculously high amount of interest in the skateboarding since me and my friends started going together almost a year ago, and I think the number of skateboarders in our town will only go up with it being in the 2021 Olympics. Although a lot of my friends haven't done much physically since COVID came about, I think that a good skate park could really get a lot of people excited and outdoors more. I know several guys that have quit skateboarding just because of a lack of places to do it. Me and my friends who skateboard at several spots downtown get asked frequently about places to skate by college students, visiting families, et cetera. I believe with the two colleges in our town, the students' families, local youth, and more, would really benefit from having a good skate park. P.S., I think with the right facility, we could have an Olympic winner for skateboarding right here in Lexington someday, thanks a lot, Wes Ryan.
From Kevin and Danielle Ryan, good evening, on behalf of our family of five Lexington/Rockbridge County residents for over eight years now, I could not more emphatically express our support for potential enhancements to the Lexington City Skate Park. Our 15-year-old has dedicated countless hours, often alone in the garage, developing his skateboarding skills, learning firsthand the merits of hard work, dogged determination, grit, and expanded coordination and athleticism. He tried all, but not taken to any other sport with the same passion and tenacity as skateboarding. In support of his commitment, we've visited every skate park we could find within a two-hour radius, how exciting to consider others doing the same for Lexington. What we experienced constantly at each amongst all patrons was unwavering camaraderie between young and old, experienced and inexperienced, they all seemed to come together in support of one another, offering suggestions, words of encouragement, or simply the bonding gesture of retrieving another's errant skateboard. What we've also positively witnessed is the exponential increase in participation of his local peers, perhaps one positive outcome of the current day social media obsession and recent Olympic acknowledgement and inclusion. What's compelling for the sport's true merit is our son's own words provided last year for Rockbridge County High School Student Journalism Project funded by pertinent citation. For me, skate, quote, for me, skateboarding is an escape, skating is definitely not fun all the time, I fall a lot more than I succeed, but when I finally land the trick I want, the feeling is incomparable. I guess skating has taught me a lot of things as well, like being humble, which I've learned plenty of times, and I don't think I've met one cocky skateboarder in my life as anyone, as everyone falls, especially in this sport. The important thing is not giving up and getting back up again and again, like I said, there's no better feeling than rolling away successfully from a trick I've worked so hard for. Some days get me so bad at skating, but at the end of the day, I can't stop because it's what I love doing, unquote. Wes Ryan, Lexington, Virginia, age 15. Please say the word if we can assist this process in any way whatsoever, thank you for hearing us out, all of you, all you and your department do as public servants, and for the earnest consideration of this added community investment. Kindness regards, Kevin and Danielle, the Ryan family.
Oh, you're gonna read?
There's a quote following. To emphasize how much impact our skateboard, skate park has had since its opening, I would like to note that one of the most frequent questions at our Colorado Welcome Center is now, how do you get to the skate park? The volunteers at the Welcome Center have requested that signs be placed throughout town to guide out-of-towners to the park. There have been, as I am told, numerous skaters from across America that have come here specifically for the purpose of trying out our new facility. I've heard reports from local enthusiasts that fellow riders as far away as Maine, Vermont, Florida, Washington, Oregon, Texas, California, and Indiana have been here to skate. For a city with a population of 10,000, we are impressed with the results, Tony Hawk even stopped by for a ride with his group a couple of weeks ago. Word travels fast when a world-class skate park is constructed, and that's from Mayor Joseph Reorda from Trinidad, Colorado.
Leslie, before you take off on the next, I know Janie's trying to list the letters so the folks on Facebook and others can actually read along with us, but there's some interference, I'm not sure exactly where that's coming from, but if you could cease and desist and allow Janie to share her screen without interruption, it would be greatly appreciated. Go ahead, Leslie.
From Lance Brenham, dear Speaker and City Council, as a skateboarder of 32-plus years, as well as an inhabitant of Rockbridge County most of my life, I am thrilled to hear that there is interest in developing the Lexington Skate Park. I could speak on the people and regional skate conditions from the late 70s, from what I have gleaned being a local, as well as what I have experienced personally, skateboarding both locally and in almost every place I have ever inhabited since 1989. But I only wish to address these facts long enough to express my desire for two things to happen if support for the park is approved. One, that the current generation of local skaters have ultimate say, two, that veteran skateboarders have access to the construction, and not just people with great intentions. I am halfway to having the material for a two-foot tall by eight-foot wide quarter pipe for that park before I ever saw the notice to jump onboard. As a real-life perspective, I'm pretty sure I messed up on which order to buy plywood versus other materials. I was inspired to start this by an old high school friend's son, who reached out to me just recently as a fellow skater, and through this realized they, locals, to Google searchers. they, locals to Google searchers, really have nothing but pavement to ride at the moment. If there's anything I can do to help build, et cetera, please contact me. Sincerely, Lance Brenham.
The next letter is from Janice Slough. Years ago, our son, along with his dad, helped with the construction of Kid's Place and is fortunate to have his name on a fence as many other children do. Later on, as he entered adolescent years, he became interested in the project of the original skate park under the support of Mary Harvey Halseth, who was the liaison to the city at that time. For many years, the park was a very active, vital place for our young people to ride their skateboards and bikes. Then it fell in disrepair and fewer and fewer kids hung out there. Fast forward to 2021, and we now have a grandson who loves skateboarding, but the skate park is not much these days. Young people need a place to go for recreation and to do the sport they love. If the city saw fit to appropriate some funds for a rebuild or repair to the existing location, perhaps parents might get involved and help as they did years ago for our playground and the old skate park. It could be a community, community project possibly. There could be several options. It would also keep the kids off the sidewalks and other places where they are not permitted to ride their boards, possibly causing more problems. We support this proposal by interested parents very much and would like to see our grandson and other community children have a place to enjoy their sport. Thank you, Jack and Janice Slough.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, and thank you, members of council, for reading those public comments into the record. Janie, is there anyone else just to double check and make sure?
I don't have anybody else on.
Terrific, thank you very much. I would offer in response, again, this is a time for council to hear what's on your mind. And obviously, there are quite a few folks that expressed an interest and energy relative to skate parks. And Ken, we appreciate you and your PowerPoint. I know there's some funds set aside specifically for the skate park. I think there were some contributions and I'm sure City Council will endorse the city manager working with the city engineer to come back to council at some point in time in the future after looking at this and looking at the budget and see if there's some opportunities for enhancing or moving off the worst skate park in Virginia, that, that location on the list. But again, we appreciate when citizens offer their support of, by words and also folks that will offer time and funds to see some of these projects through. Greatly appreciate that, that enthusiasm. And next item on the agenda is the added item, the Washington and Lee University closing down, if you will, but looking to close the streets for a period on Washington Street. And I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. Other, if you don't, I welcome your consideration of this item.
I move to approve the street closure as, as requested by Washington, LA.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Ms. Alexander, I'll acknowledge for the second roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Motion, or sorry, the vote is unanimous for approval. Thank you and happy move out to the, the students and so thrilled that they were able to make it through this semester for this, from the beginning of the year. Next item is unfinished business. Update on Spotswood Development Project and I would call the city manager for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As instructed by City Council, Finance Director Jake Adams, the mayor and I have met with the representatives of RARo several times to discuss the Piovano Building and the possibility of purchase of that facility by RARo. We've also gone over the cost-benefit analysis to get a better understanding or the help of RARo representatives have a better understanding of that document and meaning of it, some of the assumptions. At this point in time, I have not received an offer from RARo. I know they're still very interested and of course, they have asked to be in closed session tonight with you. At the same time, because we are focused on the possibility of RARo purchasing that property, I have had no discussions with other developers who have provided proposals, waiting for us to resolve and perhaps put together a deal with RARo. So there's no update on, on anything of that nature, just as council instructed. And of course, again, I would recommend that we have RARo with us in closed session and hear what they have to say so that we're all better informed of what the possibilities may be.
Thank you, sir. Members of council, have any questions on that update? I would just provide an addendum that we still, City Council still does hold the written offer from Mr. Grigsby and has, there's been no further, as per council's instruction, no further negotiating with Mr. Grigsby. We're negotiating directly with RARo at, at this point. But Mr. Grigsby's offer is still out there and valid, I believe, through July. So there are no other questions? We'll move on to the next item, which are Reports and Communications. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
Blue Ridge Resource Authority meets on Monday at seven o'clock next Monday. But for a quick update, we're still waiting for DEQ to sign off on the engineering plans for Cell 2. As I reported last meeting, that bid has been awarded. Right now, we're just waiting on DEQ before construction can begin.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith? If you have no other plans on Monday, May 10th at 7:00 PM at the County Administration Building or Zoom, could be a life-changing experience with the Blue Ridge Resource Authority Board Meeting. Main Street Lexington.
Main Street will meet next Tuesday, May 11th at 8:00 AM, and that'll be an online meeting. But a couple items just to keep in mind. Well, we've received requests for reimbursements of over $24,000 for the business support grants funded by the city. The program ended April 30th, so we should have a final total in a few days. And the businesses were very appreciative of the financial assistance. And Rebecca is working with Chris Layden, the County Planning Director, to get approval for repurposing the sign on Route 11. And as we discussed before, it'll be used to advertise events. And Rock the Bricks will be held on Saturday, May 29th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Hopkins Green. So join us for a day of history, art and music. We will be selling authentic Lexington bricks and you can preorder your bricks now at mainstreetlexington.org. And there will also be a silent auction for beautiful birdhouses built by Dustin Wilhelm and decorated by local artists and crafters. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Any questions from council? Excellent, great news and glad that those businesses were able to take advantage of that additional marketing money that city provided. Planning Commission.
We have not met since our last council meeting, but we will meet next Thursday and it'll be May 13th at 5:00 PM online and we'll have a public hearing on Sigma News Revised Master Plan.
Terrific. And by way of reminder, I'll remind folks that we do plan to have a City Council Planning Commission Joint Meeting in July that will be a work session likely prior to our July 1 meeting and opportunity to shape expectations and keep in sync for positive outcomes and projects in our city. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Yeah, in honor of National Travel and Tourism Week and Business Appreciation Month, Lexington Visitor Center has invited local hospitality businesses to a daily open house at the Lexington Visitor Center from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. Also, yesterday, there was a fundraiser takeout lunch at the Visitor Center parking lot and proceeds from the event are going to nonprofits that would ordinarily have participated in the annual Freedom Food Festival, which had to be canceled this year unfortunately due to COVID. Several tourism board members, Main Street Lexington's Rebecca Logan, Local Chamber of Commerce staff, and even fellow council member Chuck Smith volunteered their time for this event. So wanted to thank all of them for their efforts. The Tourism Board has received over a dozen applicants for round one of our sponsorship grant program. This grant program, we have $9,000 to allocate across the applicants. So board members are currently evaluating the applications and we'll have an in-person work session sometime next week and vote on recipients and amounts at our next meeting on May 19th. Just a couple of events to mention. First off, Hall's Drive-In is open this weekend. Just a reminder, it is one of only seven drive-ins in Virginia and all you ABBA and Merrill Street fans can enjoy a double feature of Mama Mia and Mama Mia Here I Go Again this weekend. That may be too much ABBA for you, but anyway, tickets are $20 per vehicle. Lexington Signature Plant Sale takes place at Saturday, May 8th from 9:00 to noon at Hopkins Green, courtesy of the Rockbridge County Garden Club. And in honor of Mother's Day, this Sunday, you can drive the back roads of North Rockbridge County and bring your mom along. There are at least 26 stops on the North Rockbridge Trail map that your mom might enjoy. Shops, farms, greenhouses, restaurants, historical sites and museums. Maps will be available at participating venues. And for more information, visit the North Rockbridge Trail Facebook page. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Dennis. Lots of fun things going on. It's nice to be emerging from COVID and lots of cool things going on and things that are COVID-friendly. And any questions for Dennis?
Just one, if you can share what the breakdown of the applications by jurisdiction are?
Unfortunately, in this round, most of the, most of the things are Rockbridge County. There's one from Buena Vista, but the rest are Rockbridge County. But we have things like Lime Kiln Theater. There's a lot of, there's a lot of businesses though, even though they might be in the county, they have a substantial impact on, on, you know, city revenues by attracting folks here. I wish there had been more applicants from Lexington and hopefully in round two, we might see some more applicants from the actual city proper.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, and thank you, Dennis, for that report. RARo, Mr. Ziegler.
The RARo Board of Directors met last night. We met out at the Sam Houston Rorerton Building as we have been meeting frequently there for the last year. We are coming to an end of our year and looking back, it's been very successful, to be quite honest, when we've pivoted and, and done a lot of sports this spring. And so right now, we're off into softball and baseball. And we made a decision to not have volleyball overlap with softball. And so volleyball will happen in June so that girls have the opportunity to do both, both sports if they wish to do that. All of our fields are in really good shape and we have really appreciated the localities that have helped us out by putting dirt and helping with mowing and everything on the baseball fields and softball fields. Because having the right infield dirt is obviously really important to all of our, all of our athletes. And so the county schools helped at Moore River and so on. And we've just really appreciate that. And I think the city of Lexington is about to help at Fox Field and it's really makes a difference. Let's see. We are in the midst of accepting applications for our executive director position and that has been advertised in some of the local publications and we have several applicants and we will soon hope to review them as a board. After May 15th is our, is our goal to start looking formally at those applications. But that, that essentially concludes my report and I can take any questions.
David, to glean from that, if I understood correctly, the application window closes technically on May 15th.
I, I don't believe we will formally close the window, but applications will, are being accepted now. And if someone is interested in the job, we would really like them to apply by the 15th. And applications are being gathered by Robbie Bailey in Lexington City Hall is who's collecting the applications for us.
Terrific, thank you very much.
And I'll add one more thing to uplift the cooperation between RARo and the other youth sports organizations in the community, like Lexington Lacrosse, for example. RARo, the city of Lexington, Rockbridge County, Buena Vista, we all take a lot of, you know, care of our fields and a lot of people use them. And so the Brubaker Annex Field has been used almost every day for the last few weeks by Lexington Lacrosse. And it's just been a really big benefit. And of course, Lex, Lax takes great care of it, moves their goal around and everything so as to not wear out certain spots. And it's just a really great cooperation to take advantage of the, the fields that we have here. And it's about to get a little bit even hectic for RARo to schedule everything because we're now starting our softball and baseball games. And so that has people moving around a little bit to Laurel Park over in Buena Vista and taking a great use of those fields. And but Darryl Plager, Brian Smith, Beth McGee do a great job at RARo, keeping everything in line.
Excellent, thank you, David. Any other questions for David? Hearing none, again, we added another topic of RANA. Ms. Strong.
Sure. The Rockbridge Area Network Authority will meet next Tuesday, May 11th at 2:00 PM and that will be online. We've moved our meetings from the first Monday to the second Tuesday of each month. And RAN has been working with Bark on their builds in several parts of the county and in downtown Lexington. And the board approved an updated pricing and bandwidth strategy plan. That'll make our internet service providers more competitive. And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Does council have any questions?
And I will add that our pricing plan has not been updated since RAN was formed.
Excellent. But well overdue and at least reviewing that. And the work continues for Bark, I know. Are, are they finished with the project in town? Are you aware?
I believe so.
They have a lot of finished work to do. I think they've run the lines, but they have to come back and repair sidewalks and do something with all of those red posts hanging up everywhere.
A lot, a lot of conduits sticking out of the ground, yes. Yes, yes. Well, thankful to get people high-speed internet and capable of doing lots of great things with that technology. Thank you for that report and thank you for your service on the, the RANA board and the work that you all will be doing in the coming year. For my report, I have several items in no particular order. But first, I'm pleased to bring forward an appointment of Alicia Bostick. She had applied for the Community Services Board position. And this is a currently vacant seat that is, would be set to expire in December of 2023. And Alicia, bear with me, I was trying to affirm, yeah, December 31st, 2023 would be the expiration of this appointment. And I'd welcome council's consideration for Alicia.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, would ask for a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Ayers.
Aye.
Alligood.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Excited for Alicia who grew up here and is working at Dr. Purry's office and is looking to get involved at the encouragement of Jamie Gooden. So we look forward to her good work and service to the community along with Dr. Gira and Mike Gilmore on our Board of the Community Services Board representation. So Alicia, welcome and best of luck. As way of reminder, we, in our contract, we discussed the idea of having city managers review no later than May of each year because it's also the time that we're working on our budget. So if there are any adjustments or compensation concerns that we need to address, we could budget for it in the following year. So by virtue of that, we'll be seeking council's support and a timely turnaround for the review documents, which will get to you as quickly as possible. But looking to accomplish that here during the month of May. Also want to alert folks, we have Owen Collins and Glenn Sullivan, who have faithfully served on the school board and their terms are set to expire June 30th of this year. We will remind you that We will remind you that the school board application process is a little bit different than our other boards and commissions. So we will advertise and entertain anybody who's interested in applying for the school board seats at our first meeting in June, I believe June third. And then we will have the fourteen days period between interviews and appoint at our second meeting on the seventeenth. So that whomever is selected will be able to sit for the organizational meeting the first of July. So be on the lookout for that and look forward to going through that process. It's always an interesting and integral part. Remind everyone that about fifty percent of our budget is our school division. Wanted to extend a warm welcome publicly to Glenn Petty. He is the new director of the Virginia Horse Center. I had the opportunity to meet him this afternoon. John Nicholson, who's been serving the community for the past several years, leading the Horse Center, has announced his retirement and a global selection committee has chosen Glenn, who hails originally from North Carolina and most recently from Park, Colorado. And seems to be a terrific gentleman, very, very active in the horse community. I think will be a great contribution to our community, understanding he has a house under contract and will be moving to Lexington beginning of June. So well, welcome to him. Also want to remind folks and welcome Chief Green will be starting on Monday and looking forward to her arrival and leadership for our city. Interim Chief Frost has done a terrific job and we're grateful for his continued efforts to lead and provide leadership in our police department. Also wanted to offer congratulations to the VMI football team, Southern Conference Champions, first time since nineteen seventy-seven, I believe. And congratulate them on a terrific playoff game and their travels up to James Madison University. Don't know if everybody's a football fan, but I would anticipate everybody is a local supporter and fan of VMI. And it's neat to see the success that Coach Walkenheim has had with the players and the team coming together and really representing and playing exceedingly well. I think they scared the heck out of James Madison, who has gone on to additional victories and working towards the national championship. So I hope the JMU wins the national championship so VMI can say they lost to the national champions. So go Dukes. Lastly, just wanted to remind you all that we are members of the Central Shandau Planning District Commission. And I serve as our representative on that regional board. As the ARP, lots of rumors, if you haven't heard, Lexington's getting two hundred million dollars. Just kidding. Lots of numbers and rumors out there as to what will be coming and what that legislation will provide. I've worked or am working with our executive director, Bonnie Riedesel, and with the city manager for the Planning District Commission, their main purpose is planning, also for grant writing and carrying out planning grants. The Planning District Commission has been very successful recently in support of Buena Vista and I believe the town of Goshen in particular with very large, in some instances, I think, million-dollar-plus grants for improvements in those communities. I've challenged Bonnie and the team at the Planning District Commission to think outside the box, to plan for what all of this competitive monies will be and to staff up as necessary to support our local communities, Lexington, Buena Vista, Rockbridge County and the towns in the county, to pursue grants and be able to be competitive. We don't have the staff to write these grants and to give it a fair shake. And I know as a member of the Planning District Commission, they have that expertise and can lend that support. So more to come with that, but wanted to make you aware of that request, not just for our community, but for all of the participating municipalities in the Central Shandau Planning District Commission. I know in my conversation with Bonnie, the biggest challenge she has is very much to many of our local businesses, finding people to hire to carry out the work. So if you know any planners that say they need a job, we've got an opportunity for them. That concludes my report. Welcome. Any questions that you may have? And hearing none, we'll pass to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members and all those listening. Just a few brief updates here on COVID first. Lexington Fire Department staff participated in, supported and contributed time for twelve vaccination point of distribution clinics during the month of April alone, very successful month for that effort here in our community. I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Friedman for his support for the successful community town hall meeting on the importance of the COVID vaccines and frequently asked questions about the vaccines. Mayor Friedman hosted and directed questions to the panel of local healthcare and emergency management service providers, who then provided accurate and updated information about the vaccines and the vaccination process. The event occurred on the evening of April twenty-ninth and over her three hundred eighty-three views occurred on Facebook during the event. Thanks also to the local Virginia Department of Health staff and panels who made the event happen. Just a little update then on recycling. Jeff Martone informs me that there's been limited participation at this time on the recycling effort. No problems at the site. We have managed to fill up a couple bins of corrugated paper and cardboard and also a bin of metal at this point. Public work staff, of course, is picking up corrugated paper boxes in the downtown business area and the other businesses in our community. And they are doing that and I'd like to congratulate them for doing that as well as performing all their other usual activities. Jeff Martone also informed me that Councilmember Smith is already a frequent flyer using the center. So congratulations to that as well or on that as well. Little update in the juvenile center. The juvenile center operates, our regional center operates on a calendar-year basis budget. And they reported that as of April, which is a third of the operating year, the city has had no utilization of the center. And of course, this has minimal financial benefit for the city. However, the important message is we have a quality community that has permitted our families and our local government to not have to deal with the negative outcomes that develop when young people do not receive the attention and services needed during this important phase of life. And I think we all should be attentive of that and aware of that at all times. It's really quite important. A little update on parks, you heard from our skateboard aficionados and supporters. And of course, we have a number of park projects that are important to our community. Jeff Martone and his staff have evaluated the park needs they're aware, they're aware of, excuse me, they're aware of within the city and I will continue to work with them and fully evaluate possible projects with Jeff and his staff that could be done over the current fiscal year, or I should say the upcoming fiscal year, and then report back to city council as to what we may be able to achieve during that timeframe. A little information about holiday and festival coordination. I would note that a voluntary committee has come together to explore opportunities to celebrate the new Juneteenth holiday in Lexington. I've been asked to work with the committee and facilitate arrangements being made so that the events can take place on Washington Street between Maine and Jefferson. A limited celebration is being envisioned at this time since COVID challenges still exist, and this is the first such celebration in our community. Folks in the committee are doing a great job and I envision few significant activities or actions that the city will need to take outside our normal arrangements for similar activities. In a similar fashion, the Rockbridge Community Festival is in a very early planning stages. They're planning on a festival that will permit robust activities and participation while cautiously maintaining COVID awareness and precautions. Initial meetings have gone well. Mr. Sam Bennett from the JCS has been my initial contact. He and the supporting sponsors intend to work closely with the city, be sure all the necessary ground is covered during this still very real time of uncertainty. All of us are aware that nine-one-one center is replacing their CAD equipment as commuter, computer aided dispatch. And the Regional Emergency Communications Center Board has made a decision to pursue a contract with the top-ranked vendor to replace the CAD system. Pending an agreement on the details of the contract, contract obligations and final plan for implementation of the system, the board intends to finalize a decision within the coming weeks. Little update on further activities in the Lexington Fire Department. And our, our staff in the department are being recertified for pediatric advanced life support. The department has been certified for PALS for a significant period of time. And recertification will continue to permit the department the opportunity to provide this seldom required but essential service to our community. The department provided support recently for the VMI spring field training exercises. The department provided a fire engine operator to assist in the instruction and training of Navy ROTC cadets in the areas of firefighting and damage control. The department participated in forty-five community risk reduction activities in April, including plan reviews, business inspections and construction permit inspections. Staff reviewed the new replacement ambulance that will come into service in the weeks ahead. Like many activities changed by COVID, the staff reviewed the ambulance virtually as it is manufactured in Canada and the Canadian government does not permit entry into Canada. Before final acceptance and delivery, the staff will also inspect it in Hagerstown, Maryland and kick the tires and evaluate the entire equipment placement and setup of the ambulance. An emergency equipment must be quickly accessed and in a logical sequence as it may be needed to respond to a great array of incidents. Also of interest, the Lexington Department received a donation of five thousand dollars from the estate of Helen State and Fix. Few updates in the police department and as the mayor noted, our new chief, Angela Green, begins work this coming Monday and she will be sworn in at ten o'clock in the morning at the courthouse. Department staff this last month, April, completed two hundred eighty-five directed patrols in downtown and city schools. The department had two resignations last month. Unfortunately, two of our fine officers moved on, Corporal Aaron Britton and Officer Penabianco. They've both gone in to serve other positions that provide additional benefits for them and their families. Sergeant Britton will rejoin the Virginia State Police where he had previously served. Officer Penny Bianco has been hired at BWX Technologies Lynchburg in their law enforcement division. The vacancies have been advertised and the department as well as the HR department is moving through the screening process for applications that have been received. Real, the regional jail considers to be, continues to be under pressure. And because of COVID and the age of the jail itself, there's a lot of strain on the current fiscal year budget. The jail therefore is seeking an additional one hundred seventy-five thousand to finish out the fiscal year. The bulk of that is for emergency housing due to inmate overcrowding, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that and an additional thirty-one thousand dollars for weather replacement that has been operating in the facility since nineteen eighty-seven. The main reason for both of these costs is that the jail is old and undersized for the population we are seeing today. Just recently, the city has received an additional seven thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollar grant from the National Emergency Food and Shelter Program. This funding will be used, just as indicated in the name, the Local Emergency Funding and Shelter Program Committee comprised of representatives from the American Red Cross, Catholic Charities USA, Lexington Area Ministerial Association, Jewish Federations in North America, a city of Lexington representative, homeless advocate. And the United Way of Rockbridge County will be accepting applications and making awards for the use of the funds. These funds would then be distributed by a local agency to individual community members and families to meet their food and shelter needs. Previously, we had also received six thousand five hundred ninety dollars for this purpose earlier in the year. Little update on revenue. Revenues for April reported by Finance Director Jake Adams. City revenues overall have picked up very significantly in the month of April. Meals tax increased by forty-two point eight percent from March and is now at one hundred and five percent of the revenues budgeted for this category for the fiscal year. Lodging taxes up thirty-six point eight percent, also based on March sales and is at eighty-three percent of budget. Bee Pole taxes were due March first and revenues currently stand at one hundred seventy-five percent of budget. Some decreases, some decreases month to month have nonetheless occurred. Sales tax revenues were down six percent and of course lagged two months behind collections. Still, this revenue category is at ninety-one percent of budget with four months of collections still to record. Utility tax revenues declined by four point seven percent and is at seventy-five percent of budget with twenty-five percent of the year still to be collected. Rescue fees were down thirty-eight percent and while a very small line item, it seems unlikely it will meet its budget revenue forecast. Water and sewer revenues are up eleven percent since last month, however, still lag behind the budget at sixty-nine percent collected. In summary, barring some truly dramatic events, overall revenues are on track to exceed our budget projections and likely will contribute to a positive year and budget balance. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor, council members. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Jim. Members of council, have any questions on that report?
I have a sort of a quick one on the revenue tax reporting. I guess maybe this goes to Jake. I guess anecdotally, how are the tax collection levels running, say, you know, compared to two years ago, they're running ten percent down, twenty percent down, thirty percent down? I know we're talking about what we're collecting versus budgeted, but I'm curious how they're running, what the collections were two years ago.
Two years ago, I don't know if I can answer that off the top of my head. Just comparing year-to-date from April this year to where we were April twenty twenty, which kind of at the beginning of COVID. But up until that point, you know, things had been really, really positive for FY twenty. I believe our meals tax is only down about eleven percent from where it was a year ago. So, you know, considering budgeted forty percent reduction in that tax, I think we're outperforming our expectations. The most significantly impacted single tax category has been lodging tax. It's down about thirty percent year-to-date. But again, we anticipated forty percent. So even that has a little bit of a silver lining in it. Sales tax, there's really no noticeable drop-off. Sales taxes continue to hum along and I think a lot of that has to do to e-commerce and things of that nature that have allowed that to be a strong revenue, even through quarantining and some of the mandated closures. And we've seen no noticeable drop-off in any property tax collections. We budgeted, I think, two and a half percent anticipated decrease in both real estate and personal property. And collections have continued to be strong. We see no reduction in that. And so far, our treasurer's office is already very busy processing early real estate and personal property tax payment. So things seem to be going well in that category as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Just to make sure I'm looking at the numbers right, similar to Chuck's question, where you indicate sales tax, well, this revenue category is at ninety-one percent of budget with four months to go. That's at the forty percent decline. If we reach a hundred percent, we had budgeted for a reduction of forty percent.
That, that's correct. Yes. When, that's a hundred percent is based on a forty percent reduction. So, and again, four months to go. There's the two-month lag between collections and transactions. So we'll accrue back July and August collections to reflect for FY twenty-one.
Perfect. So that's good, good news from a budget standpoint, to be sure.
Very good news.
Congratulations to staff on the work that they've done and to council for the challenges that we put staff through a year ago and we were staring into the abyss and not quite sure what we were going to do. So an interesting year that I'm sure people will be talking about for the rest of their lives, but thank you all very much. Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none, city attorney, Jared.
Good evening, everyone. Just two brief things for a report on the Enfield Road Water Tower property. Made progress and we've heard back from the title insurance underwriters. They've reviewed the court order that was entered in the case and they are willing to write policies on it. So legally, I don't think there was any question that things came out well for us and that was essentially just the practical side of things to make sure that the title insurance companies agreed. So from my perspective, there's nothing really keeping that project from moving forward. So Jim and I will be working with Mr. Gaskin to, to get everything moving forward on that project. I think this will certainly give him some comfort that the title and the order, and now the title is defensible and shouldn't have any issues. And then secondly, five members of the fire department were notified recently that they were going to be called as witnesses at depositions in a case involving a an emergency call that they responded to and that has now become a court case where a local hospital is being sued. As it stands, my understanding from everything I've reviewed and spoken with the attorneys As it stands, my understanding from everything I've reviewed and spoken with the attorneys involved, that the members of the fire department are only being called as witnesses. There's no, I think, no one's under the impression that they did anything other than their absolute best in the situation. And it's really just a matter of the attorneys wanting to be comprehensive and getting everyone involved in the case on the record. But I don't, I don't think there's any real issue or real question as to sort of any ulterior motive on the part of any parties, like I say, other than getting a complete picture of what happened from start to finish. But those will be probably early part of June, and I'll be representing and defending those folks on behalf of the city. And that is all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Members of council, have any questions for Jared? Hearing none, Jared, thank you for those updates and positive progress. And thank you for the work you do for the city. Next item is new business. Consider adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan. Janey's putting something up there for us, and I'll call on the city manager for his comments and observations.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Jake Adams, Finance Director is going to take the lead on this one. He prepared the briefing for you and is very familiar with the finalization of the budget details. So I'm going to let him lead off if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, Jim, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Tonight before you, we have our finalized FY twenty-two budget proposal as well as the FY twenty-two through twenty-six CIP. Just to briefly summarize, it was included in the briefing, but just to recap some of the changes since our last budget work session and some of the discussion there and things that were implemented. So starting with the general fund, we did increase the proposed cost of living adjustment from two percent to three percent for city employees. Additionally, along with that, adjusted our cost share for Raro and Central Dispatch as fiscal agent for those two entities. We extended the same three percent cost of living adjustment to their budget. So we adjusted our cost share accordingly. I went through and did some minor adjustments to the police and the planning personnel budgets. Just, we finalized obviously the new hire for the police chief, as well as the new administrative assistant that has been hired in the planning department, and we're glad to have on board. So finalizing those numbers as well. And additionally, received information from the state in their latest budget amendment that was passed. Now registrars within the Commonwealth of Virginia, their compensation is to be commensurate with treasurers and the budgeted salary from the compensation board for treasurers in the state of Virginia. So, and that goes by the, the population size of the locality. So there's a scale for what treasurer base salary is based upon population. So they're to be commensurate with the base comp board salary of the treasurer. So taking all of these personnel and fringe adjustments into account, the total increase to the budget was sixty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Additionally, I went through and did a final sweep of our revenues to see if there were any adjustments that needed to be made. And I did find some additional funding to offset. There are new budgeted amounts from the comp board that will receive for both the treasurer's office and the commissioner's office, some additional funding there that is in their budget slated for approval. And additionally, some increased state funding from, for the electoral board and the registrar as a result of these compensation increases. So total revenue increases offset, that's sixty-nine thousand dollar budget increase. So the net overall increase was just a little over fifty-three thousand dollars. So if we take that away from the surplus that we had shown prior to this final revision in the budget, that surplus, if you recall, was approximately two hundred and fifty-three thousand. That left us with just a little over two hundred thousand dollars in anticipated surplus. So if you recall, in order to balance the general fund budget, the true balance budget will show a one hundred and twenty thousand dollar surplus because of the loan payment from the utility fund coming back to repay the general fund. This is FY twenty-two is the last year of that, so this is, this will be the final loan payment between the two funds. So this leaves just a little over eighty thousand dollars in remaining surplus that we can put toward parks as discussed in our last budget work set. So I've placed that funding in our budget in the parks cost center with the, in the capital outlay line, along with the funding that's already been placed there, approximately fifty-four thousand and has sort of been set aside for Jordan's Point projects. So if you take into account this new eighty thousand, the fifty-four thousand that was already there, and the fifteen thousand programmed into the CIP for parks improvements, we have a total of about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars this year in FY twenty-two budget for use towards park improvements. And I know public works staff is working on a list of priorities and projects and is vetting those along with the city manager to come up with a list of park improvements to put into motion for FY twenty-two. So with that, our general fund budget is balanced, and we have allocated those funds accordingly. Also with the utility fund, I did a final look at our utility fund budget, our projected rate increase, and always look ahead to our long-term modeling on what we anticipate for capital needs and, and long-term expenses. In the last several years, the, the budget process for setting rates for utility fund has used an expense multiplier to generate a pretty good-sized margin in the utility fund in order to have additional revenues set aside for capital projects. However, as we've noted over the last several years, wholesale increases from the MSA have led to water and sewer expenses becoming a larger and larger part of the utility fund operating budget. And, you know, I know Jim and I have talked as well as Jeff, and we're very cognizant of the capital projects and challenges we have ahead of us. But we're also very cognizant of the impact of rate increases on our citizens. And, you know, with several years of very high rate increases that, and the compounding effect of those, rates can easily double in a very short amount of time. So we're very concerned about that. We revised the rate increase to go from eight percent, which was proposed, to now five point five percent. And in doing this, this still accomplishes a lot of our goals. We are still passing through the wholesale increases to our customers. About eight percent, little over eight percent for water wholesale increase and six point nine percent for sewer this year. And this also allows us to budget in our three percent increase for city expenses as well and ongoing capital needs. So in adjusting the proposed rate increase, this gives us ninety-four percent operating expense ratio, which means a six percent margin, which is just about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in excess revenues, operating revenues that the utility fund will produce, is programmed to produce. So again, we're, we're just cognizant of the rate increases, especially because for next year, already forecasted for the MSA, there's another, I believe, eight to nine percent increase for both water and sewer. That's, that's been proposed as part of their budget process. So trying to manage all the challenges we have with capital projects as, as well as maintain reasonable rates for our citizens. So that, those were the final revisions to the budget. You know, I think this has overall been a very different process from last year and a lot more positive news and positive information to share. So with that, if there's any additional discussion or comments, Jim and myself are here and happy to take any questions you might have. We do recommend a motion tonight to adopt the FY twenty-two budget and the FY twenty-two CIP as presented.
I have a question about the MSA rates. MSA was in the process of completing a facility study, which would require additional capital expenditures. Has there been any formalization of what those numbers will be, which will actually end up increasing our Lexington citizens' rates overall as well, in addition to what we're talking about now? And so has, as they, has MSA come up with any final number for their facilities program?
Mr. Allagood. I'm sorry, Mr. Allagood, I'll handle this if I could. I sat down with Jordan Combs, that is Spencer and Suter and either county administrator, sat down with Jordan Combs earlier this week and discussed the facilities planning process. They are near the end of the process for the water plant, the wastewater plant, they're nowhere close. They have not developed numbers yet for either of those facilities. They are looking at a few projects that maybe need to be evaluated in the near future for the water plant. But again, they're nowhere close on wastewater plant. One of the reasons for meeting with Jordan Combs was to see if we could collectively work on some grants through the American Rescue Plan. There are some competitive grants out there for things such as wastewater treatment. So Spencer and I, along with Jordan, are looking at what those possibilities are. But again, to answer your question directly, we do not have numbers. The MSA does not have numbers on those facility studies yet.
I had heard just, and again, I've just heard, I don't have any document in front of me, nor have I seen any, that we're talking about substantial expenditures at MSA, substantial to the point of, in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars. And numbers like that are serious numbers, and it would necessitate a long-term debt. And that's where our share would be to cover that. Has there been any back-of-the-envelope types of statements like that?
I have not seen that from the MSA. I have seen, again, for the purposes of looking at some grant opportunities, I have seen projects and ranges of funding. Projects in the five hundred thousand dollar range, projects two million dollars and less, projects two million dollars and more. So very general in that regard or that nature. Myself, just reviewing that, those very broad ranges, you're correct. We're talking tens of millions of dollars of very initial estimates. Again, you know, those are ranges of estimates. Two million dollars could mean a two-point-five million dollar project, two-point-one million or four million dollar project. All we've heard is over two million, under two million, over five hundred thousand. So nothing that's probably very reliable.
Right, and all of these numbers, these, these rough numbers that we're talking about will increase the cost to Lexington citizens for water and sewer. They won't go down or nor stay the same, and they will be in excess of the current proposed, already fixed MSA increases because those increases don't include any of that capital plant that MSA is in the process of developing. So I guess, I guess it's a flippant comment, but hold on to your wallet.
Unequivocally, Mr. Allagood, the MSA has been, for lack of better terminology, making noise that their operations are old and tired and are in need of support and capital. And that is certainly coming down, and I feel very confident that the city manager and the county also are the other partner in the Maury Service Authority or customer is, has a very keen eye on what those expenses will be. And all of us, our entire community will be impacted with higher water prices, to be sure. We've gotten away with cheaper prices for a long time, but not setting aside capital along the way to pay for this. Of course, I remind you, the comments I made about the Central Shandone Planning District Commission, competitive bids for infrastructure, it's being bantered around about in the capital of our country. And I know that we're waiting patiently to see what the rules of engagement are. But boy, would be a real blessing to all of our community to be able to obtain a grant to do that necessary infrastructure and equipment replacement at the Maury Service Authority. So.
Most assuredly.
Indeed.
Thank you very much. Thank your information.
Yes, sir. Any other questions of the city manager or regarding this item? Hearing none, I would ask for council's consideration of the recommendation from staff.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the FY twenty-two budget and the FY twenty-two to twenty-six CIP as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for roll call vote. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Allagood.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again to staff for the exhaustive work that goes into putting this together every year and discerning priorities and working with council to uplift our community and to do what's in the best interest of all of our citizens as we work through this each year. And sleep well tonight because tomorrow we start on next year's budget. Just kidding. Sort of. Next item is fifteen dot two, consideration of reimbursement resolution for Diamond Hill area water and sewer.
That is a Jake issue as well, sir.
Thank you again, Jim. So staff continues to work towards our financing effort for the Diamond Hill Phase One Water Sewer Project slated to begin work around early July. We've submitted the city's application for the VRA, Virginia Public Financing Pool, summer bond issuing effort. That application was due this past Monday on May third. We actually got it in two weeks early, and VRA and Davenport were very appreciative of that. And it's given them a good time to look over the application. And we had a very productive call today, this afternoon, with myself, public work staff, representatives from VRA, financial advisors at Davenport, as well as city's bond council at Biken Rose, just to establish a timeline for the effort and answer additional questions that were still out there. What you have before you tonight is the next step in this process. This is a resolution that will declare the city's intent to reimburse itself with bond proceeds, should the financing ultimately be approved, to cover any incurred expenses that occur prior to bond closing. So the bond closing for the summer pool is scheduled in early August. Again, we hope to begin work, have, have bids received in early June and have work begin in early July. So there'll be a gap of time between early July and early August where work will commence and expenses will be incurred, but the bond has not yet closed. So this resolution, you know, at this juncture is not financially binding or obligating any way on the city. The financing agreement is forthcoming and will likely be brought for council's consideration in early June. This resolution, again, for you, is just declaring the city's intent to reimburse itself, should the financing go through with bond proceeds. So the total anticipated bond issue for the project is five point nine five five million. So that includes a project fund of five point eight eight million, based on the latest engineering estimates, and seventy-five thousand dollars additional to cover local costs of issuance, financial advisor fees, VRA, as well as bond council fees. So this resolution for you tonight, drafted by city bond council, it's been reviewed by myself, by Jim and the city attorney. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and we recommend a motion to adopt the resolution declaring an intent to reimburse for the Diamond Hill project.
Thank you, Jake. Any questions from Jake's presentation? Hearing none, I would ask for council's consideration.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five, which is a resolution to reimburse the city for any costs incurred prior to the finalization of the bonds.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, and thank you, Mr. Ziegler. I know how much it pains you to spend money, even if it's somebody else's. So five point nine five five, barring to carry out this project is, I know brings you no joy, as it were. Any discussion? If not, ask for a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Allagood.
Aye.
Your heirs.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much, and please let the folks of Diamond Hill know that there's going to be a whale of a lot of dirt turning and a lot of construction up there. Please let the folks of Diamond Hill know that there's going to be a whale of a lot of dirt turning and a lot of construction up there. Anticipate it will start after school adjourns, but will be a busy and messy summer. So we ask for people's indulgence of, of those contractors and that it all goes smoothly. That concludes the regular agenda. We do have a request to go into closed session. And have folks from RAR that will be joining us. I would, before we go into closed session, alert folks or let folks know that when we do come out of closed session. The only action I anticipate council will be taking is our adjournment of the meeting. No other action is anticipated and nothing to be considered. And with that, I'd ask Ms. Alexander to read us into the closed session.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven. Subsection A, paragraph three of the Code of Virginia, a closed session. For the purpose of discussing the disposition of real estate for a public purpose.
Second. Thank you for the second. And we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Allagood.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
And Alexander votes aye. Motion carries and we shall move into closed meeting.
Janey, before you unplug us, just want to take a point of personal privilege to remind every one of us. That this coming Sunday is Mother's Day. Please remember your mothers and for all of you that are mothers, Happy Mother's Day. A little bit early. We are now in closed session. Janey, if you could disconnect us from Facebook Live. Make sure who all we have on here.